This conference will now be recorded.
Are we ready to go?
We do have a quorum.
Well, we might as well get going. The beginning part's a little dull. All right, well, welcome to the first virtual TAC meeting. So exciting. So we'll get started with the business that we need to take care of as far as how we're going to conduct the meetings virtually. And if you'll bear with me, I've got to read through this stuff. So first of all, we'll do a roll call in certification of a quorum. Nicole, are you going to go through that?
Yes, yes, I am. Should we go ahead and do that first?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, sorry. I'll read the statement. "We ask that everyone identify themselves first when speaking, so we can more accurately record the activities of the meeting. All lines have been muted by the administrator to minimize additional noise and feedback. You may unmute your line at any time to request acknowledgement from the chair. Staff will be monitoring the chat throughout the meeting to ensure we do not overlook anyone wishing to participate in the discussion." So I will now ask Nicole to certify that we followed the approved procedures for appropriate notice of the meeting and the means by which we are convening. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Please indicate your presence by saying "I" when your name is called during roll call. Anyone who wishes to identify themselves following the roll call of members will be invited to do so.
I'll be taking attendance. I will be calling by jurisdictions and agencies. I'm going to start with Chesterfield County. Madam Chairman, Mrs. Smith, are you here?
Aye.
Ms. Faulkner.
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to go slow this first go around. City of Richmond, Ms. Clark. Mr. Bridewell. Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
I'm here.
Mr. Kilduff. Hanover County, Mr. Vidunas.
I'm here.
Mr. Flag. In Raco County, Ms. Smidler.
Here.
And Ms. Deemer. New Kent County, Ms. Leduke. Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Here.
And Mr. Howland. Town of Ashland, Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Tucker. Capital Region Airport Commission, Mr. Rudlich.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Torres.
Here.
And Ms. Del Ross.
Here.
RMTA, Ms. Simmons. Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Here.
And Mr. Ariel.
I'm here.
Ridefinders, Ms. Tisdale. Mr. O'Keefe.
Here.
DRPT, Ms. Dubinsky.
Here.
Mr. Sparks. VDOT, Ms. Macadori.
Aye.
And Mr. Herman. That concludes roll call for attendance, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to a statement regarding virtual meetings. "Since the Governor declared the state of emergency on March 12th, 2020 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, state and local governmental bodies have been providing for the continuity of government by meeting remotely, by telephonic or electronic means in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, the Commonwealth Emergency and Other Applicable Laws, guidance provided by the Attorney General and their respective counsel, legal counsel. On April 22nd, the General Assembly approved a budget amendment to authorize all public bodies, including regional bodies such as Plan RVA and the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, likewise, to meet by electronic means without a physical quorum assembled together during a Governor-declared state of emergency, as long as certain conditions are met, so as to provide for the continuity of government operations. This new authority is effective immediately. The bylaws of the RRTPO define a quorum of the body to be a majority of the TAC membership, which shall include at a minimum four of the local government representatives. The 2020 COVID-19 virus makes it impractical and unsafe, even potentially life-threatening, for a quorum of this size to physically assemble in one location, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2A3. Further, the virus makes it impractical and unsafe for the public and the agency's staff to gather in the same location to participate in this meeting. The health, safety, and welfare of our community is paramount importance. Therefore, we have determined the appropriateness and the eligibility to conduct today's meeting of the RRTPO TAC electronically, pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 and related legislation approved by the General Assembly of Virginia and in light of the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration for COVID-19. The convening of the Richmond Regional TPO organization has been determined necessary in order to continue the necessary business of the organization. The matters included on the agenda address important, essential matters of continuing the work of government, and therefore it is appropriate to convene during this time. While we do not know the exact duration of the current practice of electronic meetings, we will continue to function in this manner until such time as it is deemed advisable to return to in-person meetings. At this time, we expect meetings to occur in electronic format throughout the current declaration, or June 10th, 2020. RRTPO staff have provided notice of this meeting and the means by which we are virtually gathered to members of the public. Notice was provided on May 5th, 2020 through posting on the Plan RVA website and distribution of email notification to members, alternates, and known interested parties, including the media. In order to comply with the provisions of Virginia law and to improve accessibility to the discussions intended for today, this meeting is being recorded. Audiovisual recordings of the meeting will be posted on the Plan RVA website within 48 hours of this meeting. Any members of the public wishing to address the RRTPO TAC are invited to submit comments via email until the close of business one day prior to the meeting, in order to be reviewed and addressed during this meeting if necessary. Anyone participating as an observer during the meeting today may submit comments or questions at any time during the meeting via email at rrtpoinput@planrva.org or by using the online chat functions of the meeting platform. Those individuals who are observing by phone may be called upon to address the RRTPO with their questions or comments. All comments and questions submitted during the meeting will be reviewed following the meeting, and to the extent practical responses may be provided or posted on the Plan RVA website. Does anyone have any questions regarding the process for ensuring effective facilitation of this meeting, or for how members of the public may participate? Nope. All right. Next, I'll turn it over to Chet to go through the procedures for electronic meetings.
Thank you. I'm going to read what's on the screen. Hopefully, everyone is able to follow along if able. Procedures for electronic meetings. The notice of meetings. Notice of meetings of public bodies supported by Plan RVA will be given in accordance with applicable law and the body's bylaws. In general, notice will be provided at least 10 days prior to the scheduled meeting and include the proposed agenda and meeting materials, as well as confirmation of the date and time and instructions to access the meeting. This notice will be posted on the Plan RVA website, links to which will be distributed to all members, alternates, interested parties, and our media contact list, assuring that members of the body and the public are notified concurrently. Contents of the notice will include: The date and time of the meeting. Electronic means by which the meeting will be held and instructions for joining the meeting as a participant or observer. The method by which the meeting agenda and materials can be accessed. And the public participation process for meetings, including the methods by which comments may be provided by members of the public before, during, and after the meeting. Public participation. Members of the public are invited to participate in public meetings of Plan RVA, the RRTPO, and their respective committees. The following are new ways members of the public can participate in and follow the business of Plan RVA and the RRTPO during this time. Anyone wishing to participate as an observer in a public meeting may do so. They should register with Plan RVA staff to get access to the meeting instructions and may sign on online or dial in by phone. Anyone wishing to submit comments prior to the meeting may do so by email. Comments received by 5:00 PM the business day preceding the meeting will be provided to members of the public body and included in the administrative record. Members of the public may also use the chat feature in the online platform to submit questions or comments during the meeting. These will be recorded and included in the administrative record. Finally, agendas will be modified to offer two opportunities for members to address the bodies during the meeting. At the beginning, to address members regarding agenda items, and at the end, to raise any other issues not included in the day's meeting agenda, as is customary. The agenda format. In order to clearly communicate the electronic means by which the meeting will occur, the agenda itself will include the following information, in addition to the regular order of business and discussion and action items. A. Notification of the electronic means for hosting the meeting, including access information. B. The public announcement made by the presiding officer, administrator, or clerk secretary at the beginning of the meeting. C. Certification that the procedures were followed to adequately notify the public following certification of quorum agenda item. D. Roll call of those participating as a member of the body in the call and invitation to others to identify themselves. E. The statement concerning public comments submitted via email or online meeting platforms will be shared with members of the public body and included in the agency's administrative record. F. Open the floor for any member of the public to address the body regarding any matter included on the agenda for the meeting. G. All planned agenda items. And H. Open the floor for any member of the public to address the body regarding any matter germane to the body but not specifically included in the agenda. Voting. At the appropriate time, the Chair will call upon members of the body to introduce a motion addressing the action item. Following a motion and a second, discussion may ensue, ultimately resulting in a call for a vote. Each vote taken during an electronic meeting must be a roll call vote, with each member's name and vote recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Minutes. Minutes of each meeting shall conform to the normal standards of minutes recorded for the body. Additional documentation should include: A. The fact that the meeting was held as an electronic meeting pursuant to the authority and reference the specific disaster declaration. B. The type of electronic means by which the meeting was held. And C. Each member of the public body who participated in the meeting. Other participants in the meeting as observers may identify themselves, and if so, will be included in the record. In addition to written record of the meeting, audio/video recording will be posted within 48 hours of the meeting's conclusion on the Plan RVA website, along with the written records once approved. The body may approve the minutes of an electronic meeting at a subsequent electronic meeting or one that is held in person. Expiration. Procedures shall only take effect in the event of a state of emergency declaration pursuant to Virginia Code, whereby electronic means of hosting meetings of the public body is the only practicable way to continue the conduct of the organization and achieve other objectives to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community and the body's members and staff. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. So let's go to the first item on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. Can we have a motion to approve?
This is Tiffany Dubinsky. So moved.
A second?
John O'Keefe, I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
I guess we have that. I'll be taking a roll call.
Sorry. Yep, roll call.
Okay. The committee will now be voting on item number one, approval of RRTPO TAC meeting agenda. Please unmute yourself when I call your name to cast your vote. Chesterfield County, Mrs. Smith.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Vidunas.
Aye.
In Raco County, Mrs. Smidler.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mrs. Amos.
Aye.
CRIC, Mr. Rudlich.
Aye.
GRTC, Mrs. Torres. Ms. Torres, can you unmute yourself, please?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Aye.
Ridefinders, Mr. O'Keefe.
Aye.
DRPT, Ms. Dubinsky.
Aye.
And VDOT, Ms. Macadori.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Okay. So next on our agenda is approval of the March 10th TAC meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the March 10th, 2020, meeting minutes?
This is Liz Macadori. I approve of the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
John O'Keefe, I'll second.
Thanks, John. Nicole, if you'll go through roll call or the voting?
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair. The committee will now be voting on item number two, approval of March 10th TAC meeting minutes. Chesterfield County, Mrs. Smith.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Vidunas.
Aye.
In Raco County, Mrs. Smidler.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mrs. Amos.
Aye.
CRIC, Mr. Rudlich.
Aye.
GRTC, Mrs. Torres.
Aye.
Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Aye.
Ridefinders, Mr. O'Keefe.
Aye.
DRPT, Ms. Dubinsky.
Aye.
VDOT, Ms. Macadori.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, back to you.
Okay. Item three on our agenda is the public comment period. Did we receive any written comments?
We did not.
And is there anyone on the chat with comments? No? Or do we have anyone with us who would like to comment? All right. I think we can move on then to item four, which is the TAC Chairman's report. And anyway, I don't have anything to report other than I'm looking forward to being able to meet in the normal fashion soon. All right. Item five, the RRTPO update. Chet?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly go through current work efforts and then a brief summary for those of us who aren't following General Assembly as closely as others. We are moving forward with a number of action items and tasks that the staff has been working on through the work program for this fiscal year. The Long Range Transportation Plan is moving forward, and hopefully you're all receiving information periodically about what's going on. This is, there's a brief summary in the agenda packet. We have a, an understanding now from lots of background and research and existing plans of what the issues are in the region. And now the draft transportation needs list is online on the LRTP website, which is connectrva2045.org. We'd ask everyone to take a look and ask others on your staff and constituents to look as well. That review and comment period will be open until May 20th, and we are taking comments a number of different ways, which you can read about. The Great RVA Transdivision Plan is moving forward. We are working with Steering Committee and plan to be shared with the GRTC Board on May 19th. We will come back to the TAC in June with requested action to move forward. Charlie Line Trail Study, the Regional Bike Ped Plan Update. Those are both moving forward. We have a great story map that's being developed for bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the region. And thanks to many of you for providing data and context for those facilities and plans. The Ashland Complete Streets Pilot Project is on its way to being wrapped up and completed. And I did want to let you all know again that the pre-apps for SmartScale were submitted April 17th. We are now in kind of a holding pattern as VDOT staff prescreens the applications. We expect that we'll be able to narrow down our list of 12. If you remember, we submitted 12 instead of the 10. We want to narrow that list down to 10 applications for full submittal from sometime in June through August. And then on the agenda today is the proposed FY21 EPWP, the Unified Planning Work Program, for your consideration. I think just a brief legislative update, and let me see if I can change the... Okay. The CBTA was finally approved and passed both the House and Senate. The boundary is the planning district, so all nine jurisdictions in our region. There are 16 members, including the CEO of each county, the town of Richmond, or the city of Richmond and town of Ashland. One member each of the House of Delegates and the Senate. And then there are five ex-officio members who are non-voting, a CTB appointee, a VDOT appointee, a DRPT appointee, the CEO of GRTC, and I believe it's the CEO of the RMTA. The funding mechanism. 0.7% retail sales and use tax, and then a regional fuels tax, 35% of which the revenues will go to regional projects benefiting the planning district. 15% go to GRTC services benefiting the planning district. And then 50% prorated to each member locality will go back to those localities for improvement of local mobility issues. All revenues are deposited into the Central Virginia Transportation Fund. And one update, this last bullet, the fuels tax continues to start on July 1, but the sales and use tax because of COVID-19 has been delayed until October of 2020. The revenue projections, these are not updated. This is the best available information we have right now, and this is the last projections that were done in March. We can expect that these projections will go down for this year and the next few years probably. But there's two breakdowns here. The revenue projections, based on the motor fuels tax revenue and the sales and use tax revenue. And then we also have it in terms of the splits. So based on where the funding goes in those percentages. So it's the CBTA regional funds, 35% is that first column. The transit services, 15% is the second column. And then the 50% to localities is the third column. And again, this is information as of March 2020. There were recommendations made by the Governor following passage in both the House and Senate that there would be a prioritization process based on an objective and quantifiable analysis that considers cost benefit, evaluating the governance structure of transit service in the Richmond region, including the evaluation of establishing a transportation district, and then the aforementioned delay on collection of sales and use tax until October. Both, all three of these recommendations were accepted and included in the final, final law as it was passed. Madam Chair, that's the, that's the extent of the TPO update.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a tip amendment. Miles, can you tell us about that?
Yes, momentarily. Let me switch it over to Miles.
Okay. So this first item I have for you today is a group of tip amendments. A quick overview on them. So there's 14 different amendments that are part of this package that were submitted by VDOT. The 12 are new projects that are statewide projects related to the I-95 corridor plan. So there's a variety of different projects, ramp metering, towing, variable speed limit. They're all using federal advanced construction. There's no specific TPO allocated fund for these projects. So all 12 of those would be new and would be added to the tip. There's one existing project, which is Paul Green Widening, that would be amended. So it would advance PE. It doesn't impact any of the allocations or funding. The reason this is coming before you as an amendment is that the total cost estimate is being updated. So in the current tip, it's only PE, and this would amend it to include the entire project. So it's going from $700,000 to $20 million. So we wanted to make sure that came before the TAC and the Policy Board. And the last piece of this is a grouping, so the preventative bridge maintenance. It's adding around $9 million in funding to that grouping. So again, that's not TPO allocated funds, but that's the sum of the request. So what we're asking for today is action, and it has two parts. The first would be recommending that the Policy Board add the 12 new projects and amend the existing projects and project grouping. And the second part would note that they're considered exempt from conformity, which is the standard language that we have for our amendments, if it applies. So that's the request on the tip package. If you'd like to review the proposed pages, they're in pages 21 to 34 of the agenda packet. So you can see exactly what it would look like as a tip item. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to recommend that the projects be added, amended, and that they're considered exempt? And recommend that to the TPO?
This is Joe Videnis. I recommend that motion.
Is there a second?
It's John O'Keefe. I'll second.
Okay. Nicole, can you go through the votes?
The committee will now be...
The committee will not be voting on Agenda Item Number Six, Tip Amendment, VDOT Request. Chesterfield County, Mrs. Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Hanover County, Mr. Vaidenis.
Yes.
Henrico County, Mrs. Smidler.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mrs. Amos.
Aye.
CRAC, Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
GRTC, Mrs. Torres.
Aye.
Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Aye.
Ridefinders, Mr. O'Keefe.
Aye.
DRPT, Ms. Dubinsky.
Aye.
And VDOT, Mrs. McAdory.
Aye.
Madam Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Draft FY21 through 24 TIP Program. Miles, can you go through that?
Sure. So this is the new tip, which has been on hold for a little bit while we weren't able to meet. So just a brief overview, the tip is updated every three years following the state schedule. The tip basically lays out our planned investments in transportation over the next four years. And inclusion of a project in the tip is a necessary step in getting federal funding. And basically, the tip is supposed to reflect the priorities that we have in the long-range plan. So it's a consistent planning process. This is the short range, and then we have the long-range plan, which is the overall vision. So this year, as we updated the tip, we made a few changes to the structure of how it was set up last time. We moved the financial plan up to the front to emphasize the constrained nature. We have limited funding. The second piece was that we organized the projects by system rather than by locality to make it a regional plan, make sure we're emphasizing that. The completed projects, which have been finished based on their schedule, are now pulled out separately, so it's easier to find the new projects as opposed to those that are just holding out and waiting for a closeout. And then the final piece was an update to the performance-based planning section to really focus on how we've done over the past few years and how the proposed investments relate to those targets. All the projects were prioritized through the allocations process, whether it was Smart Scale, RCTC Max, TA. We also analyzed all the projects against the long-range plan for consistency with the goals and the constrained plan, so making sure that we were matching up the short-range to the long-range planning. So we did undergo public engagement. I think the last time this item was before TAC was to recommend the public review. We did hold a 45-day public review. It was advertised in The Times Dispatch and The Free Press. We shared it via social media and email with interested parties several times. There was a webpage with comment forums. Unfortunately, we had to cancel our in-person open house, and with that, we didn't receive any additional comments. So we have no additional feedback on the plan right now. So whenever we're adopting a tip, there's two other steps that go with it. One is the conformity piece. Most of you may know already, but the Policy Board did vote last week to approve the conformity report, and that went through its own public engagement process, and that's going to be reviewed by FHWA for a final determination. The second piece is the self-certification. So whenever an MPO approves a tip, they're also required to certify that they are following all of the federal guidance on transportation planning. So this resolution that's before you today includes that as part of the tip adoption. So the resolution and what we're requesting action on is a recommendation on the following. The first piece would recommend that the Policy Board adopt the FY21 to FY24 tip as presented. The second component, and this is slightly different from what's in your agenda packet, that one actually had the Rambo name, so we made sure to update it to RRTPO before it goes to the Policy Board. But it's basically certifying that we are meeting all of the federal requirements. So there's a whole list of them here, the transportation planning, the Clean Air Act, Civil Rights Act, nondiscrimination, following disadvantaged business practices. It does a whole series of them, ADA, Older Americans Act, gender discrimination, and Rehabilitation Act for individuals with disabilities. So these are the required areas that we have to certify on, so that's what we're asking for. So I know this is a lot, go through all of those sections, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion for the recommendation to the TPO?
This is Liz McAdory, so moved.
Is there a second?
Sharon Smidler, second.
Thank you. Nicole, can you help us with the vote?
I sure can. The committee will not be voting on Item Number Seven, the Draft FY21 to 24 Transportation Improvement Program. Chesterfield County, Mrs. Smith.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Vaidenis.
Yes.
Henrico County, Mrs. Smidler.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mrs. Amos.
Aye.
CRAC, Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
GRTC, Mrs. Torres.
Aye.
Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Aye.
Ridefinders, Mr. O'Keefe.
Aye.
DRPT, Mrs. Dubinsky.
Aye.
And VDOT, Ms. McAdory.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you. So Item Eight on our agenda is FY20 UPWP Budget Amendment. Chet?
Yes, thank you. This is a end-of-year budget amendment for the current work program. We are, we became aware that a couple of our work tasks were approaching full capacity because of extra interest, I would say, in some of these work tasks and focus throughout the year. So we wanted to make sure that we ended the fiscal year with, with a good distribution of funds, of the remaining funds, so that we can cover the tasks as, as needed. So as you could see on the screen, the highlighted areas are the areas where we're recommending funding changes, and it's basically reducing the, the amounts in 7230, which is contingency funding, so that we can cover additional costs under 7330 Transit and 7340 Active Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian. We did have, as you know, the Transit Vision Plan and the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan are both big work products, and we did have consultant assistance with the Transit Vision Plan. That assistance was emphasized more this year, and we were able to condense more work by the consultant into this fiscal year than, than originally expected. So that's, that's why there's the recommended shift. The recommendation is that the TPO approves the amendments to the fiscal year 2020 Unified Planning Work Program as presented, and that the TAC action to amend the UPWP as submitted meets all requirements noted in federal agreements to support metropolitan planning in the Richmond area, and includes VDOT and Federal Highways approval of this action and amending the FY20 work program.
Okay. Is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion for the UPWP FY20 Budget Amendment?
This is Liz McAdory, so moved.
Thanks, Liz.
Sharon Smidler, second.
Thank you. Nicole?
The committee will not be voting on Agenda Item Number Eight, FY20 UPWP Budget Amendment. Chesterfield County, Mrs. Smith.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Vaidenis.
Yes.
Henrico County, Ms. Smidler.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mrs. Amos.
Aye.
CRAC, Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Torres.
Aye.
Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Aye.
Ridefinders, Mr. O'Keefe.
Aye.
DRPT, Mrs. Dubinsky.
Aye.
VDOT, Ms. McAdory.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you. Item Nine is the FY21 UPWP. Chet?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm sharing a couple highlights on the screen, if you're able to see those. Otherwise, they, this entire recording will be, as we stated earlier, available on the website probably within 48 hours. So the FY21 Unified Planning Work Program is very similar in format and structure to the FY20 Work Program. We did a major overhaul last year, as you remember, so we wanted to stick with that, that format for familiarity and for ease of, ease of consumption. The focal areas which we have identified for this coming fiscal year are really threefold, and this is where a lot of the staff emphasis is going to be. Obviously, the first one is continued development of the new Long Range Transportation Plan, Connect RVA 2045, with an emphasis on a test run of scenario planning, development of additional performance measures, and increasing the opportunity for public engagement. We really wanted to focus on prioritization and having common tools in place where we can, can kind of compare priorities across all of our projects, whether it's the Long Range Plan, or the tip, or Smart Scale, or other types of work. The second focal area is to be a resource for the newly created Central Virginia Transportation Authority. One of the things that, that, that legislation does do is specifically mention the TPO in working with GRTC to complete Phase Two. Well, obviously, Phase Two of the Transit Vision Plan will be wrapped up in fiscal year 21, but the thing that the CBTA legislation calls out is that we need to collaborate with GRTC to develop a plan for regional public transportation. Staff will develop a prioritization process linked to Connect RVA 2045 that will help inform CBTA members of regional priorities. And finally, to provide a forum to discuss active transportation and its benefit to the region, including the Ashland-Petersburg Trail and other multipurpose regional trail development and connections between work, home, and recreation. And I think that we can all realize that commuting patterns this coming year are going to be a major area of study, considering options now for telework and other types of things that many businesses and employers may be considering. The UPWP again considers the 10 planning factors laid out by federal law, and we did not change the categories of the work tasks. So we have program support and administration, general development and comprehensive planning, long-range transportation planning, short-range transportation planning, which considers things like performance-based planning, financial programming work on the tip, and then the rail freight and intermodal planning. And the final category is rural transportation planning, and this is included here just for illustrative purposes. Rural transportation is actually considered under Plan RVA, the other, the Regional Commission, and not the TPO. The summary of the budget financially is that there is a major emphasis, as I mentioned earlier, on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and the travel demand modeling, which lays into scenario planning efforts and those kinds of things. And if you look at the splits, about 61% will go towards long-range transportation planning with the next categories of short-range transportation planning at 16% and general development and comprehensive planning at 11%. The requested action recommendation is that the Richmond Regional TPO approves the fiscal year 21 Unified Planning Work Program as presented, and again, that the TAC action to adopt the UPWP as submitted meets all requirements noted in the VDOT-RRPDC Agreement for the Utilization of Federal and State Funds to Support Metropolitan Planning in the Richmond Area, and includes VDOT and Federal Highways approval of this action. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions on the FY21 UPWP? All right. Is there a motion?
Sharon Smidler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Vaidenis, second.
Nicole?
Yes. One last time, the committee will not be voting on Item Number Nine, FY21 Unified Planning Work Program. Chesterfield County, Mrs. Smith.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Coleman.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Vaidenis.
Yes.
Henrico County, Mrs. Smidler.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Pompey.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mrs. Amos.
Aye.
CRAC, Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
GRTC, Mrs. Torres.
Aye.
Plan RVA, Mr. Parsons.
Aye.
Ridefinders, Mr. O'Keefe.
Aye.
DRPT, Mrs. Dubinsky.
Aye.
VDOT, Ms. McAdory.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, back to you.
Okay. Item 10, Sulaab's gonna brief us on the 2045 Long Range Growth Forecast Analysis.
Good morning, everybody. Okay. So I'll be talking about the 2045 Long Range Growth Forecast Analysis. So this document, which comes out after we update the socioeconomic data every four to five years before the Long Range Transportation Plan, was previously called the SE Data Analysis Report. It was a standalone document, but this time, we want to include this as an important component for Connect RVA 2045. So for the time being, it's just an information-only item. We'll be asking for the approval of this document along with all the other documents related to Connect RVA 2045, once we've completed the plan. So this document examines historic trends as well as the anticipated growth based on our projections. For the time being, TAC can review the report and provide any comments to staff. TAC members with a part of SE Data Work Group have already seen the draft document, but the document was attached with the staff report and can be downloaded from our website as well. So the major takeaway is since 1970 till 2017, which was our base year, the Richmond region has doubled its population, so doubled the population in 47 years. The 2020 census is, I think it's being tabulated now, and we'll probably know what's the change in 2020. We'll get the information probably around 2022. Chesterfield, Powhatan County, and New Can County experienced the greatest growth percentage-wise. And if you look at the actual numbers, number of people, Chesterfield and Henrico had experienced the greatest growth in those five decades. For 2045, the population is expected to grow at 30%, a compound annual growth rate of 1.05%. annual growth rate of one point oh five, which is pretty healthy. Again, Chesterfield is expected to see the largest population growth, followed by Henrico and Richmond. That's the actual numbers, and if you look at percentage wise, New Kent, which is the, I think, the second fastest growing county in the Commonwealth, will be the fastest growing in our region, with a seventy percent growth over the next twenty eight years, followed by Goochland County and Powhatan County. For employment, the employment has grown by eight percent in the last ten years, two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen. This, we have, we only have the data from two thousand eight, because different sources give us different information about employment. And our data, data source throughout these years have been the Virginia Employment Commission, so we only have that data from last three rounds of socioeconomic data. So that's our bench, benchmark for this. Employment declined by two percent from two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, basically because of the Great Recession at that time, but it again bounced back after two thousand twelve. Employment is projected to grow by, by almost around twenty six percent over the next twenty eight years. The annual growth rate, compound annual growth rate would be around point eight two. Chesterfield County and Henrico County will have the most new jobs. Looking at the actual numbers and looking at the growth percentages, it'll be New Kent County, followed by Goochland County and Chesterfield County. The largest employment sectors in the Richmond region are healthcare, educational services, accommodation and food services, and retail trade. And based on the current and future densities, we have identified twenty regional activity centers, and I'll discuss about this later. So this table, I don't know if it's clear for you, I don't know if it's leasable, but shows the population historic trends from nineteen seventy to twenty seventeen. We can see that there's been tremendous growth. If you look at Chesterfield County, it was seventy seven thousand nineteen seventy, and now it's three hundred forty thousand. Richmond had a peak of the population around nineteen seventy, around two hundred fifty thousand. Currently, it's two hundred twenty four thousand, and is expected to grow pretty quick in the next coming twenty eight years. The projected growth based on our socioeconomic forecast, we have a little more than a million people in the re, living in the region. For twenty forty five, we'll have a slightly more than one point four million people with an average growth, total growth rate of around thirty percent for the region, and the annual growth rate of one point zero five. So let's look at the employment historic trends. As I mentioned earlier, in two thousand eight, we had almost five hundred twenty thousand, five hundred twenty thousand, and then that declined to five hundred ten thousand twenty twelve, and now we have around five hundred fifty thousand. Sector wise, we have the employment data by the next two digit code, which are basically the sectors. So we have certain sectors which, which are showing a lot of decline, decline over the last ten years. We have some which show moderate growth, and then some sectors which have high growth. The major decline was in the information sector, which is basically newspapers, TV, radio, broadcasting, software, publishing, TVs, things like that. That had a significant decline, almost fifty percent from two thousand eight. The high growth sector, as we can see, is the healthcare and social assistance, accommodation and food services, transportation warehousing, utilities. The government agencies are somehow categorized as, the local governments are somehow categorized as utilities in V C, so that's the growth we are seeing. And the top twenty employers in the Richmond region, though, this is pretty much obvious, Capital One, it had ranking as the top employer in twenty twelve, retains that thing. V C U Health System and Virginia Commonwealth System Universities are second and third. I guess both of them are under the same umbrella, but the way it has been recorded in V C, we have to take that into consideration, that's why they are separated. If we add them together, I think it'll be the highest employer in the region. And then we have a couple of board systems, school boards, Henrico County, Chesterfield County School Board, Richmond County, Richmond City School Boards. And then the local government, city, county of Henrico, city of Richmond, county of Chesterfield. We have a couple of big grocery stores, Walmart, Kroger, and then Amazin. And then a small federal presence as well, Department of Defense, as well as Veteran Affairs. The employment projected growth based on the Schumacher Economics, which is Richmond-based economic forecasting form, we got the baseline projection from them, and based on that projection, we'll have the employment in the region would be six hundred and ninety one thousand, that would be a growth of, the reasonable growth of twenty five percent throughout the reason, and annual growth of point nine one. This map just shows the net growth of population and employment in the Richmond region. It's a dot density map, so the red dot represents employment, and the white, green dot represents population. Each dot is hundred people or hundred jobs, so we can see the spread of, basically around the central region and the ring road around Richmond City, as well as some very few regions. Density areas, so we, based on the T A Z level data that we have, we divide the reason into density areas. So this is our definition and our assumption. Urban areas are defined as areas with population per square mile of greater than three thousand. Similarly, suburbanized areas are defined with area, with the population per square mile between a thousand and three thousand. And then any, the areas with population per square mile less than thousand are considered rural areas. So this map shows the density areas in the Richmond region. With orange being the urban area, the green being the suburban, suburbanized area, and then yellow, light yellow being the rural areas. We also develop what we call as the regional activity centers. The activity center is a conceptual term, and then it depicts the area of concentration for population and employment densities. We base this on D R P T's multimodal system design guidelines, which was published originally in twenty thirteen. So both the twenty seventeen as well as twenty forty five densities were considered. So we can say that the mid-density between twenty seventeen and twenty forty five, that was taken into consideration to get these activity centers. Based on the D R P T guidelines, we have six different types of activity centers, and this is for the whole of Virginia. In Richmond region, we mostly have P two, which is small town or suburban center, P three, medium town or suburban center, and then P four, Richmond C B D, probably is urban center, P five. We don't have anything of P shot, P six magnitude in the Richmond region. So these are the regional activity centers, which we have identified twenty activity centers. Most of them existed in the previous time, we deleted the activity centers as well, but some of the new ones have popped out this time, like the Chesterfield U S Defense Supply, Kings Dominion, and then Stonebridge as well. So along with the population, employment, and demographic data, we also develop environmental justice data sets for the long range transportation plan. These data sets were developed based on the five-year American Committee Service, American Community Survey, and we're try, we try to keep the, the year for the data aligned with the base year, which is twenty seventeen. So areas are designated areas of concentration if the population of traditionally displaced population exceeds the average percentage of the target population in the region. And so we identified six different categories, mighty population, low income population, individuals with disabilities, zero car households, elderly population, and L E P population. So the Connect R V A twenty forty five, we use these identified areas as a baseline to include, to serve the underserved population for the identification of transportation priorities and funding opportunities. Probably in the project prioritization tool, we'll allocate some points if the projects are located in these areas. And these are the few maps. We have the mighty population, low income population, zero car households, and L E P. There's a lot of other information in the document as well, I haven't included them here for the sake of time, like the college enrollment autos, as well as a detailed description of all these environmental justice data sets. So please review the document and provide us any comments in next couple of weeks. This will go to the T P O just for, and it will be the same information only item, and we'll take comments from the T P O Policy Board as well. But this will go for approval along with the Connect R V A twenty forty five plan around September of next year. And that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So Sulaab, is there a firm date that you need comments?
Ideally, it will be two, two weeks. We, we want to send the, the draft document to the T P O Policy Board. If there is any comments from TAC, we want to accommodate that before providing the draft document to the T P O Board.
Okay, great. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to item eleven, which is the open public comment period. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? No one in the chat?
This is Liz, I have a V dot update, if this is the time to do that, I can do that now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Liz.
Sure. I think Chad, you, you have it to pull up, or? All right, so real quickly, the C T B meeting, the last meeting update was the last meeting they had, actually, they had one in March and April. So in March, they took action on location approval for the Route six thirty six, which is Nash Road extension in Chesterfield County. And in the April meeting, they did not have a workshop due to COVID nineteen, obviously. They did have a virtual meeting, but there were no actions that directly impacted the Richmond District or the R R T P O study area. The next meeting is going to be in May, they are not having a workshop, so the meeting is the twentieth at nine A M. It says on their, their website, it'll be in Salem, they're still determining, obviously, if it'll be virtual or in person, and I will update you guys as soon as I know. Smart Scale round four, as everybody knows, the pre-application period closed April seventeenth, that was an extension from April third. Richmond District saw ninety six preapplications, which is about twenty percent statewide. The final application portal will reopen June first. However, if you have an application in and it's pre-screened in, you'll get a notification if it's before June first and can work on that. Nobody will be after June first. If we have any updates to that, I'll let you guys know that as well. SIP development, obviously, there's been impact to revenue projections, so we're currently analyzing that. Central Office is developing an F A Q regarding the changes to the F Y twenty two twenty seven schedule. It's potential that the update would occur closer toward the end of the twenty twenty calendar year, and I will provide updates as soon as that's available, as well as the F A Q. The I ninety five corridor study, no change since last time. The plan is still to take capital improvements to the C T B in the summer of twenty twenty, that's the summer. I sixty four, we did push out the April public meetings. Data collection's still underway, but we're gearing up for first round of meetings this month. The date is still to be determined by the Secretary's Office, so I will update you all as well. That will be a virtual meeting with a pre-recorded presentation. Still planning a total of three rounds of public meetings, and still planning to take recommendations to the C T B in fall. We're shooting to have recommendations done in the summer, it looks like it might be later summer, just in time for, to take the C T B meeting in fall. And then upcoming public hearings, citizen information, we have no public meetings or hearings scheduled this time, other than I'll be updating you on a specific date for the I sixty four corridor improvement study. And that's my update.
All right, thanks, Liz. Does anyone have questions for Liz?
Madam Chair, I apologize, I didn't have the, the, the sheet on screen. We will make sure, Nicole, that we can post that on the, on the calendar for the T P O so that people can, can look at the, the update that Liz just shared, as well as D R P Ts.
Okay, yeah, Tiffany, would you like to give us an update?
Yes, sorry, it's always a bit of a challenge working from home with the two kids, and my son started walking yesterday, just short of his first birthday, so that means that he is now on the loose, and so having calls at home is a little bit more challenging, to say the least. So I have a few updates, and I'll be sure to send it to Nicole and Chad after today's meeting. But first of all, we wanted to give an update about the Federal Cares Act. C T B had allocated a hundred million dollars of the four hundred and fifty six million in public transportation funding from the Cares Act at their meeting on April twenty first. F T A will appropriate about three hundred and fifty six million directly to our urban transit agencies, while the hundred million dollar balance, that includes about forty seven million in F T A small urban programs, and fifty three million from the F T A rural programs. These will be distributed by the state, and we've already been in contact with all of the impacted transit agencies. Of the fifty three million in rural funding, twenty five point seven million is being distributed to rural agencies that are based off of our F Y twenty federal operating formula. Fifteen percent of the program, which is about approximately seven point seven million, is being allocated for the state intercity bus program, including the Virginia Breeze service and the Roanoke Smartway bus. And then balance will be held and reserved for any future needs that may come. The allocation of the forty seven million that's in the small urban funding is based on the apportionment of funds between agencies based off the F T A formula, and small agencies may now apply directly to F T A to receive their share of funding. Liz already gave, gave a pretty good update on the SIP. The only thing I will mention is that D R P T is still planning to award F Y twenty one federal planning funds for M P Os, so that application due date is still set for May thirty first. We are accepting draft U P W Ps, but as we take an action today, you guys will not have as much of an issue as some of our other agencies. Related to Antrak, right now, I think everyone is aware that Antrak has been running limited service, and state-supported ridership is down over ninety five percent right now. As of April first, Antrak had modified their operating schedule, so Roanoke, Norfolk, and Newport News have been operating a once daily round trip, while Richmond has had no service. However, Staples Mill and Main Street Station are still being serviced by through train service, national routes, and the Hampton Roads train. Last item from my update is that with the Virginia Breeze, we suspended all service effective April tenth. We're going to be moving forward, however, with our contract, as I've mentioned before, about two new routes, one of which, which would connect through Richmond. Right now, we're trying to figure out the timeframe for some service being operational, depending on the COVID nineteen situation, but we will have those two new routes launched as soon as we find it prudent to do so. And that is all I have for my update, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Tiffany. Any questions? All right. Let's see, item twelve, future meeting topics. So for June, we've got on our potential agenda, revision to R S T P and C Mac Project Review Selection and Fund Allocation Process, Bridge and Culvert Report, the R V A Transit Vision Plan, the Bridge and Culvert Inventory Assessment, Bike and Ped, Bike and Ped Plan Update, and Connect R V A twenty forty five update. So we have all sorts of fun things to look forward to in June. Item thirteen is TAC member comments. Does anyone have comments for the TAC?
It's not necessarily work related, but I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for kind of putting together the virtual meetings, this and the policy board meeting last Thursday. I definitely understand that there are challenges in holding virtual meetings of this platform, but from my experience, you all have done an excellent job kind of keeping things moving forward, so I just kind of want to express my gratitude on the work you've done so far.
Yeah, that's right on point. Yeah, that's right on point. Very good job. You guys are doing great.
This is Joe Vadunis.
Hey, Joe.
I have a, a question, probably directed at staff. Chet, you all did a great job of putting together the R S T P and C Mac tracking reports, but I, I kind of forgot how to access those. Is there a link on the website, or what's the, how do we get to those?
I think best thing to do, Joe, is probably just follow up with Miles after the meeting. Or if, if it would benefit the body, we could send out an email to TAC members with instructions.
Yeah, I had trouble finding that and had to ask Miles myself, so maybe sending something out to everyone would be good.
Sure, we can work on that.
Thank you.
I had something I wanted to let you all know about. We recently worked with V dot. V dot was resurfacing a four-lane undivided road in the county that was identified in a really high-level screening by V dot a few years ago as being a road diet candidate. And we were able to coordinate with V dot when they were resurfacing the roadway to implement a road diet for that. We'd already been in the process of studying it using some R S T P funding that we got through the T P O to look at road diets on three different roadways. Turner Road is the road that we were able to accelerate with a, a road diet where we just restrike the road with the resurfacing project. So that was done a couple weeks ago. We've gotten some comments from people concerned about that, but for the most part, I think that it's been positively received, and I think it's going to be a great addition. It's a Turner Road connects Route sixty and Route three sixty, and so it's a north-south arterial between those two routes, and it's in the area of the eastern area of the county, close to Stonebridge, which has been a redevelopment area for us. So that's pretty cool, and it was great, great partnership with V dot to be able to pull that off the way, way that we did with no additional cost. Okay, item thirteen, TAC member, oh, we already did that. Item fourteen, our next meeting is June ninth, and with that, unless there's anything anyone needs to add, we'll just adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.